Make sure everybody signs it up and passes around. And...
Dennis, is that green light on?
Anybody else I missed here? We have a...
We have the green lights on.
A retired Commissioner, Clark Conroe, who's sat through many of these meetings. He's here for his sharp memory. Anything else, Cindy?
My recorder didn't come back off the pause.
Oh.
But Mary's getting it, so we're okay.
Okay. So yeah, there's a sign up sheet. Just if you're from Tricon, say Tricon. If you just want to be citizen, we appreciate that because it'll all be reflected in the minutes of this attendance. So we have some questions, and I guess I have the first one. And forgive me for being repetitive or long-winded, but since Mr. Garcia is here, I'll start off with this first one. Your office and the decisions being made are starting to have a negative impact affecting our health, safety, and welfare of the people of Mineral County. We are weighing all options to hold you and your office accountable for these issues. Rather than resort to extreme measures, I just first wanted to kind of show you what we're talking about as you come into this. I know you're coming in blind, but we have... This is the map of Mineral County, and it's actually a little bit skewed because since this map was designed, the Nature Conservancy bought the Plumcrick Timber. As you can see, we mostly have Forest Service land here. The Nature Conservancy purchased Plumcrick, a fish creek, and then turned around and sold to the Fish and Game, who is managing most of it as WMA, Wildlife Management Area. So it's sort of like another mini wilderness, if you will. There's going to be no motorized use in most of it, no firewood cutting, no guided hunting trips, et cetera. So that map is not entirely active because there's even less private land than that reflects. So as you can see, we have a lot of forests that we'd like to be managed, not the path that has been, is that we seem to be able to work less and less. And I wrote down some statistics, and a lot of this comes out of the USDA Forest Service Region One report, September 30th, 2013.
Ken Verley.
Has joined.
So he's... Can you hear us, Ken?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay. Ken Verley of Tricon Timber is patching in telephonically to participate in this meeting. Ken, everybody's here. It's a packed house, so say hello.
Say, Ken.
Hi, everyone.
So he...
Did you want me... Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm giving kind of a quick intro here, Ken, so... The... Out of that book, the timber sales for 2012, 2013, the North Idaho area, their timber sales have gone up 18 percent, while Western Montana, our area, has gone down 42 percent. And I know there's a lot of litigation you face and a lot of issues, but that still is an interesting fact to me. The Lolo Forest puts out the least amount of wood product harvest. Out of your two zones, you've got west and east. The west zone, which is Thompson Falls, Plains, and Superior, 15.9 million. That east zone, which is Nine Mile, Missoula, and Sealy, 7.1 million. Interestingly enough, the zone that has more timber has only one need to team in it, and the east one seems to have an extra one. It has two. Tricon logs, since they need more than what's being harvested, some of their logs are coming from 450 miles away, from Helena, the Burke Timber over there, from the Cooney in Idaho. And we have a lot of families and people that need a little more than that to survive on. Some of the timber sales, this one was started, initiated in 2009, the Cedar Tom, that's one of our issues that speak to you about, that has not even started yet. Not one stick has been cut off. It was slated for about 20 million out in Idaho. That's been diluted and watered down. But historically, in 2010, we had a South Fork Fish, which is out of the Nine Mile District, but it is in Mineral County, approximately 2 million. Cut-off road sale in 2011, 800,000 board feet. St. Regis South in 2012, approximately 22 million, excuse me. And then up Keystone, the Brian Furman Project, was around 900,000. So as you can see chronologically, this is a mere pittance of what Mineral County, our wood products industry, needs to sustain 55 million. We have Tricon Mill, Big Sky Roundwood Products, Eureka Pellet Mill, and Ottenless Bark, who are all... We only have 4,000 people here, and this is critical for them to feed their families and for us to operate off the tax base, schools, et cetera. And so... But what we're worried about, Mr. Garcia, is we have one of the eight remaining sawmills in this county, or in the state, really. There's a... There's Thompson River. I believe they have a representative here. Then there's a Tricon Forest. There's Pyramid out of Sealy. There's Stoltz. RY Timber has two mills, one in Livingston, one in Townsend. Sun Mountain out of Deer Lodge. Plumcrick runs on and off out of Kalispell. But I guess we're not just worried about our loggers, the Lolo first, then we're worried about the sawmills going, and then eventually that actually threatens your agency. I mean, how do you sustain yourself without any mills in the area? Infrastructure is critical. The Big Sky Roundwood Products, they didn't get enough lodge pole for posts and poles, which you think that tree only lives 80 to 100 years old, and it's fallen down upon itself. We should be able to sustain that at least. Eight families just are now out of work, shut down temporarily, and I hope... Which is kind of ironic to me because when that happens, we just say, oh, well. But when the government shuts down and Forest Service people don't get paid, then you hear about, we have payments to make and mouths to feed and tennis shoes to buy, but so do So anyway, my question was rather long, and I guess maybe more of a comment, but we are wanting you to know that the decisions that affect recreation and management of the forest are... It comes to a critical point in Mineral County, as you can see from that map, so...
Commissioner, can I?
Absolutely.
I appreciate the background that you've given me, and I understand when a county has such a large public land base, the dependence on commodities and goods that come off of that public land base are critical to the community. There's no doubt. And the decisions that we make and the analysis that we do to try to restore the lands on the national forests, both in this county and throughout the Lolo, are things that we take very seriously. We take very seriously the cooperation with the counties and understand the importance of the dollars and revenues that generate... That are generated from National Forest System lands and the impacts that those have on the communities. There's no doubt in my mind, and I am with you 100 percent on that. The, you know, the challenges that we see are, you know, when our rangers and their staff are doing their work to analyze a project and get some... Something on the shelf, it has become very, very difficult in the last couple of years. And I'm not saying that the Forest Service isn't part of that, but I'm saying that some of the appeals and litigation that we're under make it... You know, when I look at the project list that you have there, make it equally frustrating to us to work so hard to get a project up and running and to get it locked up in litigation. And I think that, you know, as we continue to work through these issues, we're... It's just going to be really critical to have you all, elected officials and members of the public, engaged in trying to break this cycle so that we can get some more products out. I mean, that's just really my initial response. It's happening, not just here, but this is where we feel it. It's happening across the country to varying degrees. And there are some things that, you know, that I'm hopeful will help reduce the exposure, the... Our exposure to litigation, and that is through the new farm bill. Hopefully, there's some tools that we can use there that will enable us to move projects along in a way that when they're... When the projects are generated and the ideas are generated from the local communities and they say, you know, here's what we think's important. There are some tools in the farm bill now that I think we'll be able to use to get some things moving. There's no question that when I... You know, when I look at the interdisciplinary teams that we have doing the work, the planning work, sure, we could use more. I mean, we could use... We could probably double the amount of ID teams, but that would be taking away from your counterparts in Beaverhead County and, you know, other parts of the state, in other parts of the nation.
Are you referring to NEPA teams or...?
Well, I'm referring to general... To resources, to human resources that we... That it takes for us to do this planning work. We're doing this work in response to the laws that we have to abide by, the federal laws that we abide by under NEPA, Endangered Species Act. Those are things that we're subject to, and the people who are watching us write these documents and make these decisions are just waiting for us to make the wrong move on these things and jumping on that opportunity and stalling out, you know, good planning work that we do.
Yeah, well, that's why I kind of pointed to that other statistic. I mean, I recognize the fact that environmental groups are a problem, but how come some of the other areas are able to increase at the same time we're talking about a decrease here? I guess that's why I was trying to appeal to you with all this background is that...
Sure.
I just want to make sure that you're not here just to smooth out the feathers, but to really listen and understand that this is important to a lot of people who don't have any other means to support their families.
No, I hear you. I understand. Again, the...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Verley.
Yeah, can I respond to that?
Please go ahead.
I assume this is Mr. Garcia that is speaking?
Yes.
Forest Supervisor. I'm Ken Verley and President, Owner, and Tricon Timber. And I have to tell you, first of all, I thank you and Ms. Kruger for coming to show your support for Mineral County, and I thank the Commissioners for their support as well. But I'd like to really throw some support out there for the Superior Ranger District. You've got a group of people... I've been in the timber industry for 50 years in Mineral County, and I've never seen a better group of professionals that have strived as hard as they have to manage our forests and protect our counties and our communities. And I totally believe, from my experience, that they get stalemated by their leadership above. And what I just heard you say is, well, we've been here for the last 20 years, and it's not anything new. What we're hoping to hear is that you've come to this new position with some answers for us. We're dependent. We worry about our community. We worry about... Of course, we worry about the Beaverhead geology, and that's... You know, I understand you put a stint in there, but our concern is Mineral County. And we are being the largest single mill that produces federal timber or that purchases federal timber in Region One. The only one that buys more of your timber is Idaho Forest Group with four mills. But of any one individual mill, we buy more federal timber than anybody in Region One. That should have some kind of priority. We're dependent upon you folks, and to hear that, you know, all the constraints that you've been through, we hear that, we understand that, but we see other forests that are moving beyond that. And what we think, or what I personally think, is that there's a fear factor out there of the litigation, and nobody wants to take it on. When was the last time we got litigated in Mineral County? We've had two timber sales where we had letters of support from the Cedar Club as long as Tricon Timber bought the sales. So we work well with the environmental groups. We'd like to follow the collaboration process, and we'd like to move forward. But the people that are on the ground need the support of you folks at the top. They don't want to hear rhetoric. I don't want to hear rhetoric. That's what we've been hearing all these years. It's critical for the families and the county, the taxpayer, and Mineral County. And unfortunately, I can't be there today because we have a family emergency, and I'm going to have to get off the line. I'm sure there's going to be a lot of other conversation there, so I don't want to take too much time, but I did want to get my thoughts out there on the table for you.
Well, hey, this is Faye Kruger, Regional Forester. Can you describe for me how it's been portrayed to you that higher-level stalemate the district here? I'd like to understand that a little bit better.
Are you talking to me?
Yes.
Ken, her question was, can you give her an example of how higher, upper-level management stalemates the on-the-ground process of the local...
Well, a classic example might be Cedar Tom right now. How long's that been on the shelf? How long we been talking to the past Forest Supervisor? And we've heard the exact same thing we just heard right now. And, you know, we have the fisheries people there, and we were heard that Cedar Tom was moved to the top of the priority list, and we can't even get callbacks and responses to what's going on. That's the lack of leadership I'm talking about.
We came over... I came over with Jody Bush, and we talked about Cedar Tom, and I know it's one of your topics, so do you want to go into that?
I guess. You guys want to go into that? Sure. Yeah, do you want to stay on the line for that, Ken? We're going to talk about Cedar Tom?
Yeah, I'll stay on as long as I can.
Okay.
Okay. Tanya, you want to give a little update on what's going on there?
Yeah, so where we're at with Cedar Tom now is we had turned in our biological assessment. I guess more of a review process that we went through, and we turned in the findings of that to the Fish and Wildlife Service. And actually, that was... And I think this is what Ken may be talking about a little bit, is that the Regional Office was helping out a lot with that review. So this is for the fisheries part of the project. It has to go in for consultation with Fish and Wildlife Service. So that's been at the Fish and Wildlife Service office for a while now, and we're waiting back for a biological opinion from them before we can move forward. And we are working with them. Our regional aquatics and fisheries folks are talking to the Fish and Wildlife Service office, and they're working back and forth on getting that biological opinion back, so...
Right. And so I just wanted to share what we've done from the regional offices I don't see as a stalemate. We have prioritized some projects, Mount Nor mine being one of them, because Libby, Montana, has similar issues, Cedar Tom being another one. We've put our biologist on this to help biologist here on the Lolo National Forest. I have worked with Jody Bush to get an agreement going, to get her more help, in which I'm willing to fund and employ to look at some of this consultation, to move it forward. So I think you had an effective meeting from our last meeting here in Mineral County, and I don't see it as stalemating at all. I see as we are supporting the forest and the district to move these things forward. So maybe we're just not communicating in real time to let you know all the things that we are doing, but we do have to go into a decision, understanding there will be challenges in the court. I think you saw it with Colts Summit. It doesn't scare us, but it prepares us.
All right.
And so we want to be prepared. What you don't want to see happen is that we go back and rework it a couple of times. And so I'm not saying that that won't happen, but those are the things we look at, and we say, what do the courts tell us in this situation? And how do we prepare this document so that we're up to the standards that have been given? And so, again, that's not stalemate to me. I think that's a business practice that you would take on yourself at Tricon. If you had something in the safety arena that you had to increase the standard, you would do that, and you would provide for your employees. And I believe we're doing the same thing.
That's correct. The difference is, we do it immediately. And, you know, I think that where I talk about lax support, and I apologize for interrupting you because I do have to go here very quickly, but, you know, we've had numerous calls in to Jody Bush, from my understanding, and maybe even some to you, I'm not sure, that we haven't got responses to. And that's the disappointing part. And maybe when you talk about the lack of communication, maybe the willingness to collaborate and work together is what we're looking for.
Well, I just have to take exception with immediate. We meet every week on our litigation and what has changed. All of our biologists that can make the calls or somebody represents them so they know what is the latest, what has to be done to meet a standard. We do this every week in real time, and it's because of the very issue that we're talking about here. It's important to us that these documents move forward, and we support this Superior Ranger District. And so I just need to make sure that gets out and that you hear this from me, that this is going on, because you may not know. I don't know if Jody's answered your questions or not with Fish and Wildlife Service. From my knowledge, I have no outstanding calls from you or the county. In fact, when the county said we wanted to meet, I said I would be there, and I'll bring Tim Garcia. He started this week because I think it's important for you all to meet him. So I don't know what's in the system for chat, but those are the facts that I see on a daily basis.
The facts that we see are, from the time that you handed that to Fish and Wildlife Service, they have 135 days to respond.
That's right.
It's been a year and a half.
That's right.
So that's the kind of thing we look at, as to what's working and what isn't.
And as Tanya mentioned, we work with them, and we do move back and forth on those, and it is taking a really long time, but...
Next, Joseph, the Chair.
We were also told on September 30th that Cedar Tom would be finalized by December 31st, by you at the meeting here.
I think Jody told you that at the meeting here? I don't know that it was my quote. I think she gave you a date. And so what we've been doing is, we have been working, Tanya's been involved, the Regional Office has been involved in order to meet the standard. Now, we could say they didn't make the 135-day date and move forward and make a decision, and we don't believe that that's prudent. We believe we would go back and rework the document. And so we're making a business decision on that, and we think we have to be given a biological opinion from Fish and Wildlife Service before we make a decision here.
Has the opinion changed from the beginning?
No. No, we're still looking at... I think you said you didn't know if it was 20 million board feet or not. We're looking at 22 million, is my understanding. And so, you know, Ken, I check in on Cedar Tom at the Regional Office to make sure it's moving along, and what I hear Kevin saying is, it's not moving along in my mind. And I have to tell you, it is a cumbersome process, and we are...
Well, normally with deadlines like 135 days, there's consequences. It seems as though there is no consequences for... They just ignore it. We've sent letters... The Commissioners in Mineral County have sent letters to her. She has not responded and will not respond. So, I mean, that's what we get to live with. That's what we see, and that's where the opinion comes from. I'm sorry it's that way, but that's how we...
I just wanted to say...
What we see, and that's where the rubber hits the road for us.
What I'm doing is, I'm making sure we work with Jody and we don't work against her, that she has the entire state of Montana. How can I help her so I can help you with Cedar Tom? That's what we're working on from the Regional Office level.
Angela.
Yeah, this is Angela with the McRag Group. You know, when Ken was talking about lack of leadership, it took the McRag and the county Commissioners to finally speak up and say, this project's taking way too long. And then finally, we had a... I'm going to take it. The... Gosh dang, I'm drawing a blank.
Research?
No, no. The Forest Supervisor, Debbie Austin, at that time come to a meeting, but until then, the project was stalemated. Nothing was happening until we finally were frustrated to the point. And with your new leadership, we're hoping that's going to change. It needs to change.
Well, I selected Tim Garcia. He will do a great job. He will be on top of these things and make sure that you know what's going on. Now, my understanding is Tanya's been briefing you and letting you know these things, right? That she's been coming to the county Commissioners and keeping you posted on a monthly basis of what's been going on. And so I hear you. It's frustrating that it's not done yet, but we're moving on with Fish and Wildlife Service. Again, right now in the Regional Office, we have somebody reviewing some of these things to help you out. So Tanya will let Tim know if we're not getting help, but my understanding, talking to Tanya, she's been briefing you, and if there's help needed, we've been giving it to you.
Yeah, the Regional Office has been a big supporter of working with Fish and Wildlife Service Office to try to get the thing, get the fisheries report done. And I guess what... And I don't mean to jump in, so tell me if I'm in a bad spot, but, you know, I guess I... Obviously, I live here, and my kids go to school here, and I'm, you know, frustrated just like everybody else is with the timeframe and stuff. So I guess I'd like to see what we can work on together of projects that we can move forward more quickly. And if these large landscape-scale projects are going to get stuck like this, either due to consultation issues and concerns, or due to litigation or whatever, are there other things that we can do, working together with the Commissioners and with the community and with the industry? Are there other things, ways, we can move some, you know, projects through a lot faster or slightly faster, anything, you know, to kind of get some things moving? And obviously, you and I, Tim, will be working on trying to make some of those things happen, but I guess I want to hear ideas from you guys, too, on would that help if we could get some other things, even if they're smaller. They may not be 20 million in one big swath.
Yeah, 900,000 here and there will help. Right, Angela?
West Mullen, that'd be a good example. You know, we requested West Mullen, and it's been denied as a project, and we've got timber on the hill just dying, which is pretty good because you drive right down the highway face and you look at it. So that'd be a project to fast-track.
Now, my understanding is, you requested that, and Tanya, you took a look at the possibilities of doing that. And so at the district and forest level, you made a decision. It is my understanding that you briefed the county Commissioners on that it may not be economically feasible for you to pull your ID teams off of work they were already doing for maybe not that much opportunity. You had to weigh that and balance that out. Is that correct?
That is correct. So the way that we looked at it, and I talked to Commissioners about this, too, but the way that we looked at it was with the NEPA team that we have in place right here on the west zone. So our NEPA team does the environmental analysis for all the projects that happen from Plains, Thompson Falls, all the way over here. So it's a big area. So we do... We have one team of people that do the analysis on all that. So that's why we have been focusing on these big landscape-scale projects to try to, you know, get a big area covered through the NEPA process and do a lot of really good restoration work on an area that, you know, is big, and we can do a lot of, you know, you can get some board feet off of it. We can get some stream restoration off of it, you know, lots of different really good things for the federal land there. And in doing so, we have... This team has already three projects ongoing right now, three big projects. And I think what we talked about was, I didn't really want to pull my team off of these projects that are going to provide another 20 million board feet even after Cedar Tom on another project to do a salvage project that I was concerned with getting... I don't want to say hung up in litigation necessarily, but, you know, there was going to be some attention on a salvage project. That was the atmosphere that we were being... That we were seeing in the litigation world, that a salvage project was going to bring some attention due to cumulative effects, due to some soils issues, some other things going on around. So I felt like, you know, if I have this amount of people to work on a project, I'd really like them to focus on this project, then that in the end, you know, we may get a pretty good outcome from a big outcome, whereas pulling that same group of people off and focusing on a small salvage project that, you know, may not come into fruition at the end of it. And I guess that... Those are the things that we weighed out, and we talked about maybe trying to get more resources. The Commissioners and I talked about that, and we weren't able to make that happen. And so, you know, without additional resources to work on the salvage aside from our other projects, that's how we moved forward. You know, we could look again at the salvage, the idea of the West Mullen salvage. I would be open to that. I guess I would ask that we equally look at the farm bill possibilities, because at this stage of the game, would it be a little wiser? I guess my thinking is, it might be a little wiser to look at a 3,000-acre CE of Greenwood right now that we could jump on in this new CE category that we're afforded under the farm bill, and that the Commissioners helped by sending a letter to the Governor and... and that the commissioners helped by sending a letter to the governor and supporting that designation. So all of Mineral County, except for just a couple of areas, is covered under this new farm bill CE category for insect and disease and fire regime class condition and that kind of thing. So there's a possibility that we could do 3,000-acre CE just as quickly as we could do West Mullen salvage. So that's something I would throw out there, that if I had to choose one or the other with my limited people, I think that might be the best thing for bucks, so to speak.
Can I speak to that real quick?
Yeah.
I guess here's my thoughts. We'd want them both. We need them both. You just seen all the numbers right there on the board. Picking one 3,000-acre project was a drop, it's a drop in the bucket. We need them both. So the question for you, Fay, would, how do we allocate resources to this local district so we can make that happen in Mineral County?
Well, I have a question. When there's a fire, there's fire money available. Restoration, road work, redoing the roads. Can that fire money be used to hire the NEPA team? Can that, can the NEPA team, can that be charged to the fire? To have a NEPA team come in and do their work on the fire?
Ken Furley.
Has left.
Elvis has left. So I, and I don't pretend to be an expert on bear dollars, but I think that's what you're talking about. There's the, it's called bear dollars. And I don't even know what the acronym is.
Burnt area emergency.
There you go. And so we do get dollars for, you know, repair a fire line and some of the road stuff and things like that. But it's very, as far as I know, bear dollars, they have to be used in very specific places. Like, we can't even use them on all, on all restoration activities for the fire, only on certain ones. So to my knowledge, they're, we're not allowed to use those dollars for any kind of, you know, hiring additional...
It's burned area emergency recovery work. And so it's for emergency purposes. So soil erosion, invasive species, bridge replacement, things that we've lost, fences, that type of thing. It is not for NEPA teams to look at what next. So, no, we don't use that money for NEPA.
Is closing roads more important than salvage sales?
Excuse me?
Is closing roads after the burn more important than salvage sales?
Well...
That's what you did.
What, I'm not sure what they did here, but you'll have to...
I can tell you what I did. I live there.
So, Tanya...
But you're not doing any salvage work.
I don't know if it was part of the burned area, the bear money or not, so I can't address that. Lori's question was, does that money come to support NEPA teams?
Well, I was just wondering if...
And it does not.
By law.
Yes.
You know, your partnership with the environmentalists has given them everything they want. And has, has turned around. And your agency is now an agency looking for a mission. You're losing your personnel. You're disappearing. What I, has not personally happened to me, but I've heard it happen from other people. They've discussed projects with the forest service. And they say, "Well, we'll go to Missoula and see what the environmentalists will let us do." We don't want to hear that. I understand litigation. What we want to hear from you, Mr. Garcia, is, I'm going to come out to Superior to the commissioners and hear what they want us to do. This is the type of attitude we need. We don't have, we can't have your attitude in the future. You've also had an attitude of animosity towards the general public. "I'm sorry, we're the ones that pay your bills. We're the boss, not you. This egotistical thing doesn't work." That has to change. Your culture has to change.
Tim has been here one week. So he's done a lot better than him.
Try to give him a little bit of a break.
I just want to say one thing. In the two years I've been here, nobody has come into my office and said, "What will the environmental community let us do?" That has not happened. I have not had that dialogue. So I just want to put that out there on the table. What we have been doing since I've been here the last two years is we've been talking about our capacity. And it goes like this. 2,000 and what, about 10? I think our region had $272 million, including our firefighting and different activities. I want to say back in about 2000, 13% nationally of our overall budget was fire. About 12 to 13%. Today, our budgets have gone down since then. And not complaining about budgets, just stating the fact, our budgets have gone down. But the amount of money or percentages of our budget that's fire-related is almost 50%. And so we've lost capacity to do the work that you want us to do. I don't believe it's elitism on my part, nor Tanya's, nor Debbie's, nor Tim's. What we're talking about is, we have limited capacity and a huge need. And that's what you're getting at, Ford. There's a huge need out there. And so we're talking about, where are the efficiencies and what can we do with that limited capacity? So what we've talked about, larger landscapes, while we do some smaller work at the same time. NEPA teams, where do we set priorities and gauge them? That's what the forest looks at. They let me know when they need help. What can I do to help? That type of thing. We can't do it all, but we try to help where we can. We have talked about the collaboratives we have in place. I know many of the county commissioners serve on those collaboratives. You help define where we go and what we do. The collaboratives say to me, "We've got to move the work out the door." And we agree. I've gone to the governor's office and met with the governor several times. We've entered into an agreement on how we get our work done. What we want to do is, we want to leverage. Where are we going? What are we doing? How do we increase our capacity through the different rules and regulations we have? I think what Tanya was asking, the county commissioners, work with me in the same way. How can you help me leverage? What are some of those solutions? I just heard her say, "I'm willing to sit down here and help figure this out. Secure rural school money. Are you on, you know, RAC? What do you want to see happen in your county?" Those are the kind of things that can help her leverage and make that happen. So that is what I'm hearing, is there is a willingness on all of our parts to work with the county commissioners, anybody else, to figure out how to make this work. But knowing, there's only so much capacity that we have. So what do we do? How do we increase that? And I think the other thing Tanya is saying is, with the farm bill, you're set up well. That's what I heard her say. There could be some opportunities as we work through the process. The next process in the farm bill, the Secretary of Bill Sac will designate, yes, and write a letter to the governor, "I agree with all your selections." Or, "You need to give me more information in a certain area, whatever that is." And that should be coming out in the next weeks. I don't know, four to six weeks is my guess, but I don't know. So I'm hearing you say, "I got one NEPA team. We're covering several areas. How can we work together and help find a solution for this?" And you've heard me say, "When I get the call, I help." And I think you heard Tim say, "It's important to him. He understands it."
Well, and just in response, so that you know where I'm coming from, I intend to engage with mineral counties. I intend to engage with every county on the Lolo and to talk to them and spend time with them to understand what's going on. This is, this is the jump off the high dive, so to speak.
Baptism by fire.
But you know what? It's my job. And it's my job to spend time with you all and to understand what's going on so that I can help the Rangers and the staff, the Ranger staff out here, understand how to prioritize resources. And just, and again, to reiterate what Fay says, it's not that we don't have the desire or the interest. It's a capacity issue. And we're making the best resource allocations and prioritizations on what we think we can get accomplished.
Next, Jim Arney from St. Regis.
Yes. I'm sorry, we're sitting right behind you. I just want to broaden this picture a little bit back to all the mineral forests and mineral county. It's pre-ranger district. This forest has been cutting, whoa, less than 10% of the growth each year for the last 20 years. Okay? Of the growth. That means it's been growing into overcapacity for over 20 years. When it gets to overcapacity, it's not growth anymore, it's decline. The forest is declining right now, this fork. Okay? There's only two ways to stop that. Burn it or cut it. So you can't just talk about little projects. 100 acres here, 1,000 acres over there. We're talking about this entire district. And this entire district is overmature and is going to burn. So if you want to talk about emergency, we are in an emergency. We are. And so you are the managers for us. You have to do something about this.
I'm going to say, "We need to do something about it."
Okay, we will help.
Yes.
But you have, you are in the driver's seat.
Right. And so you heard Tim say, he needs to understand this. There's limited capacity.
But the growth is there.
And I don't dispute that. But what I'm saying is, we need your help to leverage and figure out how we can do more, because we are not growing our organization. We are not adding a lot of positions. We're struggling to replace the ones we have. I believe nationally, we've gone down on the non-fire side of the agency roughly 30% in the number of positions we have, which are doing all the work that you're talking about.
Right. But the fire problem wouldn't be a problem if we were managing the forest for help.
And that's where we need your help. We can't do it all.
I helped understand that.
I don't.
That's basic forestry...
Culmination, I mean, in a minute.
Absolutely. We are past it. This entire forest is past culmination.
We are in agreement. But what we have to figure out is, how do we work together? Because there's only so many people. There's only...
It's self-sustaining financially if you actually put the program together.
So there's something that we could do to start this process that's been done in other places. And you've got an up arrow in northern Idaho. And do you know what northern Idaho did? They put their collaborative group together and they said, "Let's determine our five-year plan of work that we're going to do." And they did it collectively. And they got agreement on where they're going to go and what they're going to look at. And so they did a "we," not a "they." And so the industry was at the table. The environmental community was at the table. The county commissioners were at the table. So there's a model out there for a "we" approach to this.
Yes. But you understand, right, that this forest is overmature and declining.
I understand we have many situations like that.
This forest.
Yes.
We're managing this forest.
Right.
It's overmature and declining. Insect, disease, fire. That's what we've got.
We understand that. But what I'm asking is, we need help. We can't do everything that needs to be done.
We are here, we have been asking. That's what Kevin's talking about. We have been waiting. And so how proactive do we have to be?
Right here. They're saying, "I want to do it." And so we can fight about the need.
I'm not fighting...
Or we can talk about the solution. And I think that's what I heard Tanya say, is, "Let's figure out what the solution is, because I think we're in agreement. There's work that needs to be done."
So, Tanya, we are here about solutions. The accomplishment of the NEPA process is a challenge within your agency.
It is.
What is the process to hire somebody outside the forest service to complete the NEPA process? Because it's being done in other places. Why isn't it being done more?
We can hire contractors to do some of our work. We can hire, we have something called enterprise teams that can do some of our work. And it's a decision that's made by the forest, based on the money they have available, to do that additional work. And that's where, again, if you can look at how you can leverage and how maybe you can create some of that money, I don't think you have money to hire contractors. And I don't know, I believe the Lolo does not have money to hire contractors. Because when I've worked with Debbie Austin in the past, they struggle to meet salary. Now, you tell me if I'm wrong on this forest. And I'll tell you what, many of my forests do. And again, I tried to set this up and explain it. Our budgets have seen a different amount and a shift in where our money has gone. And the work that you're talking about, that we want to do, we have limited capacity to get that done.
How does outside money come into that process?
How does outside money come into the process?
If the county had money to help with the NEPA team? If there was some other fund, some other pot that could help fund NEPA? How does that work? Just like the ski area expansion at the state.
Well, there's different models that are being looked at out there. One way is for us to figure out where we can find additional money to actually do the contract work. Another, if you're familiar with the Colville model that they're trying, industry is actually financing some of the NEPA work with the, understanding that they will get the sale when it sells. And there's quite a laborious process to make sure there's no conflict of interest going through all that. So that's being tried on the Colville. Again, working with some of the collaboratives, they perhaps could come up with some ideas of what could happen. Secure rural schools. I believe you can invest in NEPA if you so choose, is that correct?
I don't know.
I don't know.
I believe you can. Usually my, and I got to tell you, this is a couple decades ago when I was a district ranger. But when I worked with secure rural schools in the RAC, they chose not to finance NEPA. They chose to finance projects on the ground. They wanted to see something toward restoration, culvert replacement for bull trout, different issues that they wanted to see happen. And different kind of mitigation for permities. So that's what I'm familiar with, with my work. But I do believe you can take secure rural school dollars. And we can, make sure I'm right, that nothing's changed in the last few years, and invest it in NEPA contracts.
Helena, in Helena, they have, the state is doing, state DNRC is doing NEPA or NEPA for a federal project, because it threatens Helena?
No. In Helena, we're working together with the state and with the city. And the forest service has done our own NEPA on the Red Mountain Flume that goes to Chesapeake Reservoir. The DNRC has done some of their NEPA work. And the Helena city itself has done some work on their land. So collectively, we're working at that. By working together and leveraging our resources, we put in for some money from the Washington office, something called the chief's funding for NRCS and the forest service. And we received $800,000 in that watershed to take care of insect and disease. Once again, dying forests. And so, and how it affects the municipal watershed. So we have some more capacity there, because we've received additional money. Doesn't last forever. We've got to get that work done. So we're working collectively together on that. But what I'm sharing is, when we work together, we can leverage and make some things happen.
Try and go in order, Mr. Price. Please be brief, though.
Yeah, I'll try and be brief. You haven't been here that long. But I can guarantee you that all the people that are here have jumped, fought, donated their time on these collaborative issues to get more in the mills. And then we see the end result there. Okay? We take the time from our families, everything. But what I want to particularly talk about, because you talked about the collaborative issue and what we end up with. You were sitting right here. Debbie was sitting here.
Debbie was sitting here. Jody was sitting there, and I was sitting here.
They were sitting, you're saying, "All right here together." Where it couldn't be misunderstood, and it's on tape. The forest supervisor expounded about her ex parte communications with the environmentalists. We get a deal all set up with our collaborative group. And then she has that, she's in Missoula, and she calls up the environmentalists. She talked about this in depth. And they come to her office, and then they decide what they won't litigate. And then she puts that forward. And that's why we end up with nothing. We end up with roads closed and no timber harvest. Now, I want to see a change in that attitude. These people want to see a change. But I personally will guarantee that if that happens anymore, I will be just like the Sierra Club and the rest of them. I will sow seed. And I'll get enough people here, we'll make it. Very, very uncomfortable. Because we want, we want this. We don't want this secular special interest from the environmental groups. If they want to come to the table and talk to us, that's fine. We want to be part of making the decision, not have it reversed in Missoula in a closed-door deal.
So can I share exactly what Debbie was talking about? Is we have an appeal process that's been replaced with an objection process. And when anybody appeals her decision in the past, we were required to ask them if they wanted to have a meeting. That was required under our rules and regulations, that's what she was explaining. And she's required to have a meeting with them. And some people attend and others don't. And when she has a meeting with them, she's trying to find out, where can we agree? And that's what she was talking about. Those rules have been replaced with something called an objection process. And so, an objection process is done pre-decision, and the appeals process was done post-decision. And so I believe she was trying to explain how those procedures went. She wasn't closing a door and having a secret meeting to have a secret meeting. She was following the rules of the appeal process at the time. In the objection process, it is different. You file an objection prior to the decision, and it is a public process, and everybody can show up.
Senator Fielder, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just for the record, I was part of one of those organizations that appealed with Debbie Austin when I was a citizen. It's one of the reasons I actually ran for office to represent the people here. Your regional supervisor refused to have that meeting. That organization, Sanders National Resource Council, went through the appeals process. They exhausted all the legal avenues that they had. The best available science was not being used. It's bunk science from nineteen eighty-seven based on two grizzly bears shutting down two point one million acres. One, maybe one point two, it's over a million acres, up in the Cootney and Idaho Panhandle. Debbie Austin said, no, your appeal is no good. We're using the best science, that the one report that's never been published by and/or peer-reviewed according to scientific standards is driving the closures on over a million acres up there. And she says they use the best available science. Then she refused to have a face-to-face meeting on that appeal. She would not do it, and there's records of that. There's three requests that were sent for a face-to-face meeting with your supervisor and that organization. And she would not do it. And then your forest supervisor, Mr. Bradford, refused to attend a scheduled meeting, as well as the acting ranger at that time, Ranger Hoyam. They refused to attend a scheduled meeting. So there are some problems there, and you can talk about it, and it sounds good, but what's happening is not what you're talking about.
Well, I'm talking about the appeal process specifically, and you know, and you received a letter, or you will receive one soon, on the objection process for the Cootney National Forest Plan. I don't know if you've gotten it in your mail yet, that we are going to have an open, public objection meeting process. And so I don't know the history of what the meetings were for and what they were about. I know what we're doing today, and I believe Debbie was explaining the context of the appeal process and what was going on there.
Things need to be done differently because they were not being done responsibly. And, and that's why we're where we're at today. It's been going on for decades, and it's not working, it's not been working.
Did you receive your invitation to that public meeting, April twenty-ninth and thirtieth?
No, I have not.
Okay, you should shortly.
So Faye, just a little bit of probably where public perception, I mean, maybe not in Missoula, but I think everywhere else in western Montana, the public perception, like you were talking about, your desire and interest, and where is that desire, and where is that interest? A "we" versus not a... I know that it's hard to be neutral probably in Missoula when you have a lot of pressure. But where that public perception comes from for a lot of us is the old Forest Service people. Jim Arnie was a forester, Dick Felbergy, Roger Kesting, Dennis Hildebrand, Glenn Keppke, Roger Hurst, Bob Delve, Jim Burwasser, missing some, even old Mr. Walt Robb. They were, they were stewards of the community. They lived here and they helped us get timber sales, they helped right-ofways, they helped roads, they helped railroads. And now our public perception is different because, and this is where we hope Mr. Garcia will bring a refreshing attitude, is that when we think that, it's because of what's happened here. We have seven wilderness areas within one hour's drive of Missoula, Montana. Seven, there's a Selway, the Mission Mountain, the Bob Marshall, the Scapegoat, the Pintlers, the Rattlesnake, Welcome Creek. And then there's a de facto Great Burn right over here in another part of our area. Who makes those decisions? It's not Congress, it's somebody in the Forest Service who decides that might be a great area to carve out with a stroke of a pen. We'll not be able to ride snowmobiles, four-wheelers. We won't be able to access it. That's, we're talking about balance. All we want is balance. We've seen enough of the hiking and biking trails around here. People from New York who say, yeah, we want our forest preserve, they look at it from the interstate. They don't even go up there. We go up there, we cut firewood, we ride our snow cats, we take our families, blueberry picking, huckleberry picking. We are just so frustrated because we want your desire and interest to start. The pendulum needs to swing. I mean, I know in the forties and fifties, they did clear cuts, the pendulum swings, now we can't do a damn thing. We need, we need some pendulum in the middle where you're doing some balance of recreation for some hikers, recreation for some bikers, a little bit of restoration, a little bit of logging, a little bit of four-wheeler travel. We've got miles of roads with hard bedrock, perfect for ATV riders to ride. Steep terrain where they will not go off the road, it's self-enforcing, they will not outlaw it, right? Because of how steep it is. They have thicker wallets, that's another part of our economy here in Mineral County we would like to see improve is some recreation, other than somebody comes out with their bag or Benoa hikes for the day and leaves. That's where this public perception, you're in Missoula, you make the decision, you have the power. Sometimes not even with a legislative body helping make those decisions. We vote for them, we vote for Congress. Somebody in the Forest Service gets to make a decision that we can't even raise our families on. That's where we want the interest to be grounded in your mind when you're in Missoula, thinking about projects for us.
So Roman, I gotta say something here. And I'm not being testy, I'm just being factual. Have I ever told you what decision to make? Okay. He used to work for me. Have I ever told you what decision to make?
Okay, and I'm not saying it to you, Faye, I know there's been predecessors who have decided the Great Burn should be wilderness. I know there's predecessors who've made seven of them within hours of Missoula, I'm not blaming you. I'm talking about where our frustration and this public perception comes from. And I didn't mean to lose my temper, and I don't want to run you off, I'm glad you're here.
Yeah, and so, and I'm gonna push back on you gently. But to let you know, hey, I'm not steering these folks from Missoula, okay? All kinds of people come in and talk to me all the time. I hear from industry quite often, I hear from the environmental community quite often. I hear from people promoting wild and scenic rivers, more of them. I hear from people promoting more wilderness areas. I hear from people promoting less. I hear from all of those folks. But I want to share with you, I don't call these folks up and tell them what they need to do. There's a public process, and I trust that they know what to do and how to balance the direction they get from the forest plan and from the public, and to make that best decision. So I just want to make sure that you know that. Now, I think we need to figure out next steps for when to get together, what we want to research and bring to the table. If you want to look at opportunities with Secure Rural School funding and how you want to invest some of that, give Tanya an opportunity to look at, hey, where could we go? Maybe give an opportunity for this farm bill to play out to see where some of these priorities will land with the governor? Because the governor's quite involved in all of these things. I think we need to start, I don't want to come back in three months and have the same discussion. I think we need to roll up our sleeves and start figuring out where we can, we can be working more together. That's where I think we need to go.
Faye, in response to the mention of the farm bill, I'm reading from the Missoulian press release here from the governor, Bob Harrington of the DNRC states right here, "There is no new money to implement these titles." That will be a big part of the discussion because without funding to conduct analysis, and we don't have any staff on the ground, we're not going to get a lot of work in progress. So how are we going to? It's lip service, is what it looks like.
That's what I've just been talking about, how do we leverage? I've just told you, we don't have any more capacity. But we do have a new tool that Tanya is talking about that gives us efficiency. And so how, she's saying, hey, I want to look at that efficiency against West Mullen, is what I just heard her say, and figure out with you, what can I do here? And so she's putting out some opportunities on the table because Bob's right, there's no new dollars coming with this. But what we want to do is, we want to work with folks who want to work with us to see what we can leverage to make happen. We have got to be in this together, Duane.
Yeah, we, that's what we're wanting too.
Well, we're in violent agreement here.
What's your name, sir?
Jason.
Say your name.
Jason Todd Hunter. We've heard a lot of discussion about funding, and I, and we all understand that, you know, the Forest Service, it seems to us a lot of times, is turning into more of a fire department than a stewardship of the ground. And so you guys have talked multiple times about funding. And one of the things that I have been hearing a buzz about is the fire borrowing. And that is, taking some of that fire money and reallocating that to projects. The idea being, let's fight fire when you don't have the hazard of smoke and flame. You know, we should have fought the Superior Fire five years before it burnt, had it thinned up, opened up in the wooie. Let's fight it when we don't have the smoke and the flame, provide jobs, and in the end result, we get done what we want on the ground. And by accident, we will produce more wood than, I mean, if we're just stewards of the land, by accident, you will produce enough to provide for the mills in Mineral County.
Yeah, Jason, one of the things that, so fire, fire borrowing or fire transfer, whatever you want to call it, is, is what's been happening to the Forest Service the last probably dozen years. And over the last ten, let's say ten years, we've had to shut off the presses of all the other work that we're doing. If it's going out, working on trails, working on recreation facilities, issuing special use permits, because we run out of money. And let's say it's the middle of August, and we know that the fiscal year doesn't show up until the end of, end of September. And, and we, you know, it comes from the chief's office, and he says, you gotta stop working on other projects because we need all hands and dollars on deck to put these big fires out, those fires that go, you know, a hundred, two hundred thousand acres. So that, that's the term, you know, the term fire transfers, in my mind, that's what's happening. And that is a huge problem. That's not a sustainable way to run an organization. When you're having to borrow at the end of, you know, at the end of the month to pay the rent the next month, that's not a good, that's not a sustainable way to run a family. So what, what's happening nationally, hopefully, and, and there's a lot of talk on the Hill, is to figure out how to fund these big fires, these, you know, thirty, sixty, ninety-day fires outside of the regular budget that the Forest Service gets, so that we can keep doing work and that we can keep issuing permits and keep the trails open and the rec sites. That is a huge problem.
That's the FEMA.
Yeah, well, it's some sort, something like FEMA, it'd be, you know, it could be FEMA, but it'd be something. It absolutely is. If we could work on restoring these lands on the front end, and then we're not putting the air tankers and the fire engines and the fire crews on the ground to put the fire out, that is, that's absolutely correct. You know, there's forty-eight million acres that are at risk nationally of catastrophic wildfire. Those forty-eight to seventy-two million acres, that, that's a term I think that the secretary uses.
I think we just told you that.
Well, and, and, you did, I mean, you did. That is, those acres are at risk. We have, we have to accelerate the restoration and the, at the, you know, increase the pace and the scale of projects.
Proactive planning instead of reactive.
So we're not, so when the fire bill rings, we're not dumping a bunch of money into putting these fires out. If we could thin the landscapes, work on restoring these landscapes, I absolutely agree with you.
So let's work on solutions. What you don't know, and Tanya doesn't know yet either, is I brought every one of my forest supervisors into a meeting with research on Thursday, and we went through some new powerful modeling tools that get at all the issues that we're talking about. So here's the solution on the table. I can bring researchers in to help us do some modeling for where we should go first. And Tim sat through it, so he knows what I'm talking about. Where our opportunities lie, you all can be at the table and see how the, the tools work. It will help us, again, I'm going after efficiencies because I don't see more money. And I'm not complaining about money, I'm just saying, there's only so much. You, you live with it in this county as well. When you have more needs, you have a budget, that's what you can work around. I'm saying the same thing. Be glad to offer up somebody to come in and help do the analysis to find out where we want to go first and what we want to do, and to help Tanya figure out where is that best spot to start doing the work, and under what conditions and what circumstances. So here's the solution. Here it is, here's one of them. Working with Secure Rural Schools in your rack, here's another one. What else?
So first, Mr. Anborn, and then Mr. Schwatter, and then you Herman. So go ahead, Mr. Anborn.
I'm kind of wondering how much money could the Forest Service save by not decommissioning roads? First project I thought, the West Mullen, was decommission the road. That's ridiculous. I mean, if people pay to put them in there, people gotta pay to take them out? Does that make sense to you?
Well, I don't know what's happening on all your roads here, so I have to look at you to say.
Our resource use plan states, no more decommissioning roads. You've been doing it for ten years.
Well, that's the county resource plan, right? That's not your forest plan.
We don't have a forest plan.
No.
No, but we do.
No, there's, in the, in the Lolo National Forest, there is no forest plan because our resource use plan is holding it up because it is in violation of our resource use plan. We have not had a meeting for the roads, for the transportation map. There has not been a meeting, a public meeting on that that I know of at all in this county. And that is a separate document from the forest plan. Forest plan revision team came here and nothing happened. We had a meeting several, and I know this was all pre any of you.
Why are you not respecting RS 2477?
Well, here's the thing. You have a county land use plan, and we have a forest plan that we think is valid. So we don't agree there. That's a point of disagreement.
I believe the last forest plan that was passed for the Lolo National Forest was nineteen seventy-six?
I believe it was nineteen eighty-six.
Okay, sorry. Since then, there is no, I mean, that plan isn't even being followed now. That's a plan that you're going with. There's a lot of things in that plan that aren't being followed. There's, there's roads being decommissioned, not according to that plan even, not according to the travel plan. We've had several travel plan maps come out since the last forest plan that has passed and been approved. Those maps are all changed, there's roads missing. When we have a fire, we have to, they reopen roads for the Mullen fire. We have search and rescues. We can't get back to the people because there's gates on the road, there's berms on the road. And then we get to the point where, okay, now it's a body recovery, now we can't even take a snowmobile back there because it's a dead body.
Do you know what map they used for the West Mullen fire, the year?
This, this is...
It's nineteen eighty-three.
I don't know the specifics of what's happening there. So that's something that Tanya can work with you on. I just want to say clearly, the Lolo National Forest has a forest plan. My guess is, it's been amended several times and has been updated. I understand your view is you don't recognize that. I'm saying we do. And so there's a point of contention, I, I hear you. And so that's, that's a good, you know, area for Tim and Tanya to work with you to say, okay, we still follow clean water, clean air, National Forest Management Act, our National Environmental Policy Act, our Endangered Species Act. We still follow those laws at a federal level.
Representative Swire.
Mr. Garcia, Mrs. Kruger, welcome to my home. I live just down the road, and I work just over that road, it's quite convenient. I've heard a lot of discussion about solutions and actually going from this several decades of meetings and scoping and planning and planning for planning and scoping. And I've, and I've heard a few of the problems that you have to face every day. And you talk about capacity, that you need us to actively work with you, and I think that we're here today to do that. We talk about capacity and needing money. From my perspective and from what I've seen, there's interest from the county, there's interest from private industry, and interest from the state in helping to provide the funds so projects can move forward, if that is the one block limiting things. I understand, probably don't have figures today, but in future meetings, as I understand, there will be future contact and future meetings, so that we can look at West Mullen, which is limited because of capacity. Another three, three K acre project here and there, which would be limited because of... Another three, three K acre project here and there, which would be limited because of capacity, and then the farm bill, and also Cedar Tom. Where if these things can be helped by adding capacity from other players, be it the state, the county, or private industry, there would be interest in having the discussion about getting the fine numbers and what needs to be ponied up if something can be, a skeleton can be brought together, money can be brought in. If that's what's needed, there are folks who are willing to work with you to find ways to get the funding to you. So I think that should be at the top interest level going forward for solutions to get some logs rolling.
Thank you.
Mr. Bernanke.
Yes. I think everybody in here, we pointed out there, the NID eighteen percent. In our area here, down forty-two percent. You've been circling the wagons on all these talks, and not one time have I ever heard you say, we need that arrow to reverse. And how do we reverse? You keep saying, well, we've got to collaborate, we've got to do that. That's all talk. That's all we've been getting is talk. I'd like to see some sound, feasible reasons why they went up eighteen and why we've gone down forty-two percent.
Do we want to spend time figuring out who went up and who went down, or do we want to solve the problem that we've just been talking about?
You've been talking about the problem, you need someone to work. Give us one answer.
I'm saying right now, we're going, we're figuring out solutions, and I applaud you for your recommendation. And so I'm talking about how do we move the arrow from down forty-two to up? You're saying prove to me eighteen versus forty-two. I'm saying.
Why can't they go eighteen and we have to go forty-two? That's all we're asking.
I can research it and tell you, but I think the energy best involved in all of our time is changing your arrow. What do you want to do?
That's what I said, that's what I asked.
I'm with you.
I ain't heard you say one thing about how we can reverse that arrow.
I gave you two things.
No, you haven't.
I said, I'll bring in research?
Yeah, but that, that takes, you've been on that TomTom, I think, eight or nine years.
Well, what, whatever you think, you think.
We've got another eight, nine years?
I'm saying.
I'll be gone and half these people will be out of work.
I'm saying I want to work on solutions, and I brought a couple ideas to the table and we're willing to work on them. So I appreciate your viewpoint. I'm sitting here saying, let's roll up our sleeves and do some work, and I've got two people who said, I'm in. Isn't that what you want us to do, work with you?
Why does it take so long to do it?
We're here today.
How many biologic reviews have been forced by the obstructionist on the Cedar Tom?
I don't even understand that question.
There's been biological reviews by the, they've been forced by obstructionists on the fishing, the fishing problem, the fish problem, that sort of thing.
Tanya, you'll have to tell the story, I don't.
There have been more than one biological review.
There have been more than one.
Why more than one? Is it covered one at a time? Is each fish covered one at a time?
I think that's a valid question. We, we did have a lot of scrutiny on our bull trout biological assessment on this project, on Cedar Tom. And it did require at least three reiterations of the, of the report to meet the standard of the Fish and Wildlife Services, they said. So you're right, it did require more than a typical project.
And this is going to go on anymore?
We were told, what I understand, and I'm not a fish biologist, but what I understand is that the reason that it was under such high scrutiny is that Cedar Creek is one of the last strongholds for bull trout in the, in the Lower Clark Fork, and so. So that's what, yeah, I don't know about the other cells, but that's what we were told for Cedar Tom.
We, we need to move forward. We need to figure out solutions that you want to see.
Didn't we hear the same thing on September thirtieth, though, that you're going to work with us? Here we are six months later, asking for it again.
So let's get a meeting scheduled and let's get an agenda going. Let's do it. Let's get on it. I'm telling you, we'll bring some, again, some opportunities to look at some powerful tools to help analyze where you want to go. And let's get on it. I mean, we can continue to talk about this kind of stuff, or, do you want to move forward, Roman?
Yeah, absolutely. That's why I'm glad you're here, and I'm hoping that there's some new, fresh, like this farm bill, for instance. I mean, to quote Governor Bullock, he said, "As a yardstick to measure his progress, his expectation is that the Forest Service will prioritize projects that accomplish a few objectives. Meaningfully address forest health issues at a landscape scale, mitigating wildfire risk to make our communities safer, and provide wood to local mills, sustaining and creating jobs and boosting our local economy." So I don't know exactly what you do, you know, I don't know the ins and outs of processes or procedures. But that's why I'm hoping that when you are back in Missoula and you're at a juncture where there is a process or procedure that could help throw us a bone, please keep this in mind, because while we hear about the environment, like I said, when I started, I don't want to go to extreme measures, but would it help if we did do what the environmentalists do, take the same path that they do and sued to get attention? Or in this new farm bill, is there new hope for us? Or what do you anticipate, what do you see happening with progress in light of Governor Bullock's statement?
Well, we've been working with the state for two months. We have provided them all the data and information that they've needed to put in their proposals. We've not sat back to say, hmm, I wonder what they're going to do. Tanya, you've probably been involved in it. We've ground truth for the state, the information going forward to make sure that when it gets to the Washington office level and the secretary looks at it, when it's reviewed, it's a check mark and matches the farm bill. So my understanding what happens is in the next four to six weeks, Secretary Vilsec will approve and send the governor's letters. I'm sitting here and you're telling me, don't make me wait four to six more weeks. Don't make me wait two more months, I'm moving forward. We need to move now for this county. That's the message you're giving me. You're giving the message to Tim, and I'm speaking for Tim here, is that we need action and we need your help to make the action.
We do, we absolutely do.
And so what I'm saying, why don't we move forward? Why don't we start a working group? Why don't we come in with what we can be looking at in some of these optimization tools that can help figure out where to go? Why don't we look at opportunities with Secure Rural Schools? Why aren't we going forward that way? Why don't we get a calendar out and get Tim and Tanya on the calendar and you? Why aren't we moving this way?
Well, the Secure Rural Schools, I mean, no offense, but it's basically a welfare check for our county in place of real jobs. I mean, the Secure Rural School, the money, it's probably dollar for dollar, but when we had work here turned over, rolled over eight times, log truck drivers, fuel, chainsaw repair shops, tire sales, et cetera, et cetera. So we need the Secure Rural School. I'm not going to diss it because we need that money since we don't have anything coming off the forest. So what do you mean, we need to talk about that?
Well, I, there's a portion of that that you can invest on National Forest System lands.
You're talking about the RAC?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what I'm talking about. I mean, Dwayne said, how, how can we leverage? What can we do? And, and how do you get that money fade to do that other NEPA when your capacity is limited? And this was just a suggestion, it's not that you have to do that. But when you can start seeing where you want to be doing your work on the landscape, how big a landscape you want to look at, Tanya can help do that. We can get folks to help lead you through that process. Tim's saying, hey, I'm here to understand and help. I talked about leveraging. You mentioned there's no new dollars for the farm bill. That is a fact. As we know it today, it could change should something change. I'm saying, how do we get this moving and how do you want to participate? Because I'm saying, we're sitting here going, we're in. I think that's what you want to hear. It's what we want to do.
Dennis, go ahead.
I'd like to bring everybody up to speed. Fay did say that they do have the opportunity through the RAC to spend some of those monies for NEPA. And the local RAC did consider that and they went with the individual projects rather than doing NEPA because they figured NEPA was supposed to be what the Forest Service was doing, supposed to be doing anyway. And so they disallowed that and went with the individual projects. So what you said was true. We were exposed to that as an option and we decided to not take the option of doing more NEPA because that's supposed to be your job anyway. And, but now what I'm hearing, I want to stem off of that a little bit with what you're saying, that now we can take these Secure Rural Schools dollars. There's Title II and Title III that we have to deal with. Now, the RAC, where the advisory committee, they get one set of dollars and the county gets another set of dollars, is that correct? Are you saying take the county dollars to apply for the NEPA or use the, or use the collaborative group to spend it on NEPA and so the individual projects?
Dennis, I'm not saying which one to do. I'm responding to Dwayne who said, how do you do those contracts? How do you leverage that money? What is the funding mechanism? And you heard Tanya say, my team is covering three districts and we're, we're, we're full up. And so the question was, how do you increase that capacity? I think that's a decision for the RAC to make, that they want to do it. Because what you just shared, Dennis, is they decided not to. And the reason being, they felt it was our responsibility. With a limited capacity, you can't produce more unless you look at things differently. If the RAC wants to go back and determine that they would rather see more come through the pipeline to turn the forty-two percent from down to something else, this is one avenue they could look at.
Can we take, do the same thing with the county dollars versus the RAC committee dollars? Can, can, can the county with the monies that they get, can they finance a NEPA?
I don't know.
Yeah, I think that the specific provisions are in the Secure Rural Schools Act.
Part of that money goes to, to roads, part of it goes to schools. And part of it goes to Title III, which is your emergency services.
So the discretionary would be that title.
I mean, it doesn't say anywhere in there on, on the county dollars that you can use that money.
But, but what, what Tanya was proposing is, she could get more capacity on some short, efficient NEPA. Not, you weren't saying take on the whole big landscape type thing, so that there's a faster rate of return on getting projects out the door. That's what I was hearing you say.
Right. I, I guess the way I picture it is a better mix of large landscape projects, but also some of these smaller, more efficient NEPA type projects. That's kind of what we're looking at, you know, and you guys know this already, but we have, behind Cedar Tom, we're working on Twelve Tamarack, which is another huge, you know, project that's probably very similar in outputs to Cedar Tom. And we're, you know, really close to the end of the analysis period on that. So it seems like instead of continuing to do those big chunk projects, we need to be, we need to be sticking in some of the smaller, smaller projects that'll go quicker through the process and that's how, that's how I can help. And one other thing I'm thinking of saying here is, while I know my team works really hard to, to punch out the NEPA that they punch out, I think if they were here and they heard your conversation earlier with what the comments that you made, I think that, I think that would just, I, I think that would really just give them the, the push to even get more done. You know, I mean, I think, so I can relay that back to them that we are at, you know, and they know that. But I think just that little additional push from me and to assure you all that I will work on efficiencies, and I've heard that from Fay today numerous times, that we're, it doesn't sound like we're going to get more dollars and they're just not there to get it. And so what I can do with that is I've got to make my team and my people, including myself, as efficient as possible to make things happen just as quickly as we can. And, and I, I guess I'm, I'm pledging my word that I'm going to be working on that as much as I can.
Thank you.
So Mr. Amborn and then Angelo and then you, sir. So go ahead.
I have a question for our representatives. What I've observed here in the past thirty years is Forest Service proposes projects, the Sierra Club sues, and Don Malloy backs them. Is there anything you can do to stop that? Judicial accountability.
Well, I'm Senator Fielder. First piece of legislation that I worked on as a newcomer last year was a study of the problems of federal land management and what we as a state can do to solve those problems. We have a, a working group, a legislative working group, that has been meeting every two weeks for two hours at a time by, by phone because we're all over the state. It's a diverse group. We have an equal number of Democrat, Republican legislators on that group. And we have been documenting the problems. The problems aren't just here in this county, and I'm from Northwest Montana, I live in Thompson Falls. And one of the things that we did in that study was we surveyed all the counties in the state that had fifteen percent or more of their area comprised of federal control. And we asked those counties twenty questions, what are the problems, about the problems? And we found very, very, very strong trends. These, this problem is happening all over Montana. In fact, it's happening all over the west. So we're at that point in this study, and I know a lot of you don't like studies and I don't really either, but this one, we need to do something with. And we're, we're at the point right now where we've documented the problems for the last eight, nine months since this started. We know what the problems are. So now, we've documented the barriers, what are the barriers that are preventing things from getting done? Okay, we know what the barriers are. Litigation's top of the list, funding's top of the list, federal bureaucracy is top of the list. All these contradictory laws that they have to follow, that they can't even follow because there's a roomful of, of laws to try to follow.
Is there any way that a group like McRag can get equal access to justice funds, like the Sheriff of Dallas?
Yeah, that equal access to justice for any citizen to be able to sue on a federal action if the, if the federal agency's made an error and you win, you get, you get your expenses reimbursed. And that's what some of these groups are doing. But let me finish with this study thing before. So I want to acknowledge Representative Lezer back here from Whitefish, he's in the room. He's also on the working group on this legislative study. And we are at the point in this thing where we know what the problems are, we know what the barriers are, and we're exploring some solutions. And we're talking about some big solutions and some little ones. The biggest solution that's been proposed so far is to transfer these federally controlled lands into the hands of the state so they're managed under state law by the representatives of Montanans, so that Montanans are the ones making the decisions on these lands. Several states are working in that direction right now. That's a big deal. There's a, there's a handout going around about that in the room. Take a look at it, learn more about it. Your commissioners support that. They've written a letter of support for it. If either county supports it, if your state legislators support it, we can get Congress to do that. It's been done in all the states east of here. The lands have been transferred. That's why they don't have very much federal land in the east. That's one, okay? There are some others we're looking at. There are some people here, Nancy and Bruce, that came with me today. They got a volunteer project going where they used heavy machinery to reopen a road that the Forest Service didn't have money to open. A road that was going to be closed, actually, because of lack of maintenance dollars. They went in with their backhoe, but they went through the, the protocol, worked with the district ranger, put together proposals, and were able to go in as volunteers and reopen a road. So there's the other end of the spectrum where local people were able to keep a road open, save it because of lack of maintenance. So we've got this, this great big solution, we've got these little solutions, and we're looking at a bunch of things in between. The next conference call is actually Monday morning, and you're welcome to listen in on it. You can go to my website and get information about it. You can go to the legislative website, call, call the legislative staff if you want, talk to me. I'll tell you how to get on the line and listen in on those. But the more people that are involved in it, like you are today, the more we're going to get our representatives to realize there's a problem because there's still some people that do not acknowledge that there's a real problem out here. They don't, I live here with you, I know what the problems are, but these people that live in the cities, they don't get it. We got to convince them. We've got to explain to them what's going on out here, what's happening to our families. We're getting torn apart because everyone has to go, everyone that's able-bodied is going to North Dakota to work where they don't have federal-controlled lands, they have state control. And they got jobs looking for people. We don't have that. We have the opposite. So I'm working on it as hard as I can. But Representative Lezer is one that, you should talk to him too and let him know what's going on. Do you live in the city area at Whitefish?
I live just outside the city.
Okay, so this is very different than where you live. You've got a bustling economy.
It's, it's the same rural situation. And, you know, and I just add that not everybody on this working group buys into all the solutions that have been proposed. So this concept of transferring federal lands to the state is, is one, is a solution that's not necessarily shared by all the people on the working group. That's not to say we don't acknowledge that there are issues and things that need to be done. And there are, there are some other solutions that we have not mentioned today, but we're pursuing and looking at to help collaborate and work with the, the federal government to improve and try to increase the, the capacity and the output. But I want to reiterate that the, this concept of transferring federal lands to the state, in, in my mind, and I believe in many of the other members of the Environmental Quality Council, feel that that's an extreme tactic or policy that, you know, is, is, may not be as scrupulous. But, you know, that's, that's, it's on the table, let's put it that way.
Yeah, it's a really big idea. It, it is a huge idea. It takes some warming up, too. We, we should study it, though. We should look at it and see if it would work better for Montana because it has worked better in other areas. And Montana has about five million acres of public land that we manage as a state, and we produce a profit on those lands every year. And we meet the Endangered Species Act requirements, the Clean Air Act, the Clean Water, we meet all the same. We meet all the same requirements. But we don't have the federal bureaucracy and all the federal policy driving what we do in Montana. And those lands support our schools. They support our communities. So we have more support from the people across the spectrum to manage them in a way that creates revenue and protects the environment. But it's not perfect. I know there's problems with state lands, too. But we're working on this. I appreciate Representative Leaser coming all the way down here today. We're working on it. And I don't know how far we're going to get with this, but I'm going to go as far as I can with it and continue to go as far as I can, because I see what's happening here and it's not right. It doesn't make any sense. Why is money being spent to take out perfectly good roads instead of leave them there for the next time there's going to be a harvest? And let people recreate them. Now, I know we don't want roads all over the place, because, you know, we need to protect wildlife habitat, and nobody wants someone driving in the middle of their hunting ground. There needs to be some limits. But it seems like the spectrum, as Commissioner Zouali said, is way, 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 way over here. And it needs to come back to a balance. So that's what we're working towards. And I would appreciate if you connect with me, give me your information so I can keep you informed on what we're doing, because I need your help. I need you to show up for our meetings and tell them it from time to time. Or write and tell people that, yeah, this is a real issue. It's not just me. I'm one voice over there. I'm one voice.
Angelo?
Yeah, I guess my question, you were talking about efficiencies and capacity. My question would be, why can't you reallocate dollars to the west zone, for example, from the east zone, which by the numbers up here show high inefficiencies to the more efficient parts of the forest? I guess I'd be directing you, Tim, because you'll handle the budgets for the Lolo.
Well, I handle the budgets for the Lolo, but the allocation comes from the regional office that makes a determination on, you know, there's projects going on across all the national forests in this region to varying, in varying stages, you know.
Well, then I guess the question would be to Faye, then. Why would, you know what Mineral County's battle is here. We've told you and told you a couple of times. Why would you not reallocate them dollars so we can get more done in Mineral County where it's desperately needed?
So...
Because that's a quick solution.
Because they're needed all over the state of Montana and Idaho.
Did you look at our county? How much Forest Service is in our county?
Yep.
And the fact that this mill is the largest single mill that purchases federal, I mean, Mr. Verly's argument was compelling.
So I agree with you one hundred percent. If we don't have mills up and running, we cannot do our work. I totally agree with that. And I just came from Sun Mountain, employs three hundred.
Dear lives.
Totally understand. And their map's a little different. And I'm just saying, I agree. We've got to keep all of our forests going. What I've challenged our forest supervisors with is, how do we create capacity between our different forests? But I don't have money to just pull off from one forest to give to another.
I disagree. I'm sorry, Faye, but if you look at the productivity by each forest and by each district, you should be putting the dollars where it makes the most sense.
I think we are putting the dollars where it makes the most sense. And I'd be glad to sit down with you and with Mike Nicolucci and go through where we're investing our dollars and what we're getting on the return. Be glad to do that with you. So if you want to come in, we'll sit down and do it.
Well, you're going to send your specialists up here to talk to the county. At least you were at one point. Maybe we can go through that all at the same time.
We'd be glad to do that.
You're right.
Sir, what's your name, please?
My name's Isaiah McGuffey. Obviously, the representation here has been rather one-sided. I'm in a special case, being supported first eighteen years of my life on a Forest Service paycheck and now on Forest Industries' paycheck. And it seems to me that where the rubber meets the road are these NEPA teams. You know, the question is, how do we get more NEPA teams? How do we allocate the ones that we have? Right now, I'm in a supervisor position, as are many of you in this room. And I think there needs to be a system of accountability. We're talking about capacity. And I know as I've been stretched and put pressure on in the sawmill department, capacity is a very flexible term. You know, with a little bit of exhortation and resource manipulation. Switch this person over here for a short period of time, get this accomplished. What I'd like to see is maybe moving forward, which is what seems like what we all want to do, maybe some accountability from these NEPA teams. If we're going to be setting up reoccurring meetings to get past this, I'm not sure what size they are, if they could send a representative. But get some feet on the ground, say, you know, are we at capacity? You know, what could we do to help you guys accomplish more work? Obviously, the funding's the hard part. We're not, I mean, it'd be nice if we could just double our crews or double our NEPA teams and accomplish everything very easily. But I think it would be good to see, through all levels of supervision, a focus on making sure that these teams are accomplishing all that they can.
Good point.
So, Tanya, I heard you say you're looking at efficiencies. You're going to make sure that they are. But my guess is your folks are never idle.
No.
And so, what I'm hearing you say is make sure they're focused on the right thing in order to increase that capacity. And I heard you say earlier, you're going to take that back and take another look at that.
I definitely am. I think that's a good point.
So, we're getting down on time. Do we want to make an appointment? Because we've got to be on the road at noon of what we're going to do next, how we're going to move forward, what we're going to research, all of us, and bring back to the table, and how we're going to move this. And in my mind, it's got to be a different structure. This is my second meeting with Q and As. And it feels more like a, "What's wrong with you? Answer all my questions," versus, "How do we work together and come around the table for solutions?" And so, I think, in my mind, that's where you all need to go. I don't know what you're thinking. But we've overused the term "solutions," but at the same time, that's what I hear everybody asking for. And there's a frustration level, because we've got some things that we want to get going that we are working through our process that haven't come out yet. We all want to see them land. I think we're in agreement on that. But we're not going to move the ball forward, in my mind, framing a meeting like this every time. I'm just going to be real honest with you. This isn't working together. This is kind of point counterpoint. And I think what you really want to see, Roman, is you want to see some movement forward, and so do you, Angelo. And so, we can fight over eighteen or forty-two, but what I'm hearing you say is, "Move the dial around for me, Faye." And I'm saying, "I can't do it alone." And I think we need to get a meeting set up with, and Tanya and Tim are your folks, to make it happen, to move forward, to do more in Mineral County because of that map I see up there. So I have to just tell you, this meeting has to turn toward, "Let's work together and make something happen." And so, is that what you want to do, Roman?
Yes.
Okay. And Lori, and Doug. All right, so let's get some calendars out and figure this out. When do you want to meet next?
Would you like to meet at the Superior Ranger Office? Is that a good spot?
These are the two you're going to be working with. I have total trust in them.
We absolutely want to. And if you felt this was too strong of a meeting, it's just, I've already probably talked to you and you got my message, but I thought it might be a good opportunity for Mr. Garcia to really see. It's one thing to try to tell a person to person, but when you have all these people in the room, I think you might get more of a grasp.
I hear it loud and clear. Absolutely.
So, I know, baptism by fire, I'm happy with the other two to meet on neutral ground and talk about the nuts and bolts of what we can really do. I mean, we absolutely want to do that. We even might want to be included on, you know, the Lolo Forest Restoration Committee that Debbie Austin used in the past. I mean, there's nobody from local government on it. If you pull up the website, there's Jake Krelic, the Wild West Institute, Matt Arnold, Woodland Restorations, Megan Brzel, the Wilderness Society, Len Broberg, Sierra Club, Dylan Brown of Pyramid Lumber, Chris Bryant, Nature Conservancy, Jim Birchfield, University of Montana professor, Beverly Dupree, Great Burns Study Group, Eric Norris, Montana DNRC, Rob Roberts, Trout Unlimited, Charlie Sales of Tricon, Mark Vandermeer of Van Wild. You know, these involve the schools. They involve the county. You know, we would like, we want to be involved. I mean, this is just one aspect. Maybe local government could be included in these.
They are included in many of our collaboratives.
So, yeah, we're interested. We're definitely interested.
Okay, so let's, this isn't too strong of a meeting, but we are making progress, in my mind, on this meeting. We make progress when we sit down and work together.
Yeah.
And so, that's where I'm trying to get us ahead. And I think you said, "Hey, let's get together and figure this out."
Yeah, but the first step to making progress is hearing the voice. And we're, here's a who on this little Mineral County dot. And so, we're just trying to make our voice. If we're getting your attention, we're happy now to come wherever we need to go.
Commissioner, it's a significant dot, because it affects everyone in this community. And the last thing we want to do is negatively impact communities.
Okay. Well, nice to meet you. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, so I got to get out calendars. I have to know that there's a meeting set up with all of you.
Next week's not too long. That's great. Seriously, let's get it moving.
Yeah.
Thursday, April seventeen.
Could you invite this high-level management from the State Forestry, Montana? Because I really believe that Montana owns this land instead of the Department of Agriculture. Include them in your meetings and do some management changing.
Yeah, I don't think it will be just us, because we're not smart enough, but somebody like, somebody from Tricon or somebody from DNRC to help us talk about things with Tanya and Mr. Garcia. I mean, that's my idea. Yeah, good idea, Mr. Falsted. So what, did you pull up the calendar?
Yes, there's one up there.
Thursday, April seventeen. That's what I'm looking at.
Thursday? I thought we met on Friday.
Well, y'all do, but...
Oh, oh, I see.
For a collaborative effort, maybe at the Forest Service or here or where. I'm just saying the commission room is open on Thursday to seventeen, if y'all were wanting to meet here.
Would you rather meet here, Tanya, or over at your office?
Really, either one.
I'd like to get research at your meeting to help show some models that could help steer what you may want to look at.
So maybe at our office to be able to use...
Some of the tools and show them, and that type of thing would be good.
Is it going to be limited just that, or can we come to it too?
I would like to do one more thing. I would like to connect, and it doesn't have to be at this meeting, but I'd like to connect you with the Highdale Panhandle to talk about how they move forward. They actually have a paper to create their five-year plan with the collaborative. And I think you would be very interested in that, and so...
Is it going to be an open meeting or closed?
Please.
I agree with you completely, Faye. We're so desperate. We're just happy to see any project show up on that list. To be honest with you, we're that dire here.
Yeah. So he asked, "Is it an open meeting or not?" We are not trying to keep people out. My personal experience has been, when you have more than a dozen people in the room trying to move forward, it's very difficult. And so, I leave that all up to you. If you want a hundred people there, that's fine. If you want fifty, that's fine. But I'm telling you, you can make some hay with the right people representing you. And if you trust them to represent your point of views, I have noticed that that works more efficiently. So, again, it's not a closed meeting, but...
Yeah, I tend to agree, just to select few that probably would be useful at the table.
I think, to help answer this question, could we get a show of hands if you believe the county commissioners that we have elected would represent our best interest as a county? Could you raise your hand if you believe that at that forum, they would represent our voice?
I appreciate that vote of confidence. But when it comes to some of the nuts and bolts, I would feel more comfortable having somebody that knows forests.
We would have them.
Okay.
Yeah, we trust you to pick who you want.
Okay, well, then, that's what we'll do, then. We'll take that.
It's not abnormal for counties to put a group of three or four folks together to represent different interests and to meet with the Forest Service to make sure those are represented. I've seen that in the past. It's not unusual for the county and the Forest Service to enter into a MOU, a memorandum of understanding, to say, "Here's how we're going to view your plan. Here's how we have to view our plan. Where is there some area to work together? Because I heard we don't agree."
Right.
So there's another thing to be looking at. But what I'm hearing foremost is, we need to see activity. It's not about your plan versus our plan right now. We need to see something real pro. So...
And then, Faye, just last question before you go back to the Cedar Tom thing. What can we do to get Jody Bush to respond? Or do you have communication with her? Can you put a bug in her ear?
I can talk to Jody.
Yeah, because if it sounds like that's the hang-up currently, and you said, "My estimate was off, it's twenty-two million," that'd be great, to get that thing going. And it's been since '09.
Yeah, I mean, last I heard, it was twenty to twenty-two million.
It's twenty-two million.
Yeah, that would be a good shot in the arm.
See, I'm coming in with twenty-two million.
Yeah. When's the decision supposed to come out?
Well, we've got to get through the biological opinion. And then, we'll go through the objections process. So I want to tell you, it's important you weigh in on the objection interested party process. It's very important. So maybe you can come back, and I know you meet with them regularly.
And we went through the objections process. Even Chris came in, Chris Partica came in and gave a presentation on the objection process. And you all have already expressed your interest of being at the table during that process. So I think that's really important.
That's a powerful thing. Yeah, your presence.
And that will be the difference with some of the stuff you were talking about with the appeal, you know, the appeals. We did have to just meet with the appellant and go through things behind closed doors, in a way. And then now, it's very open. Objection process is meant to be that way, so...
But to have a voice at the table in the objection process, you have to be an objector or interested party. And so, you'll have to think through how you want to be involved. Otherwise, you're a public participant, even though you're county commissioners.
Can I ask a question about that, since there's that objection meeting you brought up at the end of the month, when I am an objector? So you just mentioned that if you've got twelve people or less in the room, you can really move forward. So how many people are going to be in that objection meeting? Because it sounds like they set up one for the entire northwestern Montana area.
No, they set up two meetings. There'll be one on the Panhandle and one on the Kootenay. And I don't know how many people will attend. I believe between the two forests, we received sixty objections with multiple points in their objections. And so, I'm not sure if they'll all show up or what will happen, so I'm not...
So we're probably going to have more than twelve people in the room.
Oh, yeah. But I'm saying, for us working forward and making some hay, you make more hay with a smaller group, has been my experience. In the objection process, it is, if you elected, you can be there. If you're an interested party, you can be there. If you're a member of the public, you can be there. The interested party folks and the objectors are the ones that have more of a voice in the process. Does that make sense?
I would like to thank everybody that did show up today. I think the majority here supports what you're talking about. We've heard this before. We had MOUs. We've done all this stuff before, and that's where it gets dropped. So for a majority in the room, the proof's in the pudding now. Let's see it. You know, we've heard it. Now let's see it. And I appreciate your endeavor to engage. And we're anxious to do that. We've been begging for that privilege. We consider it a privilege. It's not a right, when it should be a right. We've been begging for that for twenty, thirty years. When we first met here, they told us, "You're going to have to say goodbye to timber and enjoy recreation." And then the roads close, the mills leave, okay? We've been through this whole cauldron. That's why there's a lot of scar tissue. That's why there's a lot of, you feel it. You can cut it. So we're very extremely anxious to move this thing forward. Extremely anxious to engage with you. We tried to engage with your predecessor. She'd look us in the eye and say one thing, and then we'd never see her again. So we're very hopeful. We're optimistic. We have to be. That's why you haven't seen us in court. We choose not to litigate. We choose to do things with a handshake. We don't want to act that way. We feel as though we're being pushed to that, to gain significance, to gain relevance. This is how we intend to hopefully communicate and talk. And so, I applaud everybody in here that showed up. They're taking time away from their family. They're taking time off work. And they're here. It means a lot. So I'm asking, from here forward, let's actually get something on the road. Let's actually get something done. on the road. Let's actually get something done. There is dollars. How can we make this work? Show us how. We're, we don't speak your language. We're not, we're not part of your large green machine. We don't understand it. We don't even think in the same terms. So please show us how to do, how to get there. When you talk different opportunities, we can't create them. We don't know. We run into some law every time we say something. We bang our head off NEPA or some other acronym. Please show us how. You'll get our support. You'll get dollars. You'll get effort. You'll get volunteerism. People here have resources. They'll put them on the ground to get things done. We just want our forests back. Please.
I agree. And I respect everybody who took the time to come. And we did hear you. And I'm saying, let's move.
Okay. We're all there. We're right there with you.
Okay. All right. So we still, is there a date? April something?
April 17.
April 17. And where do we end up? At the Forest Service office?
Yeah.
What time?
What time do you have for your time?
I don't have my calendar.
Okay, 10 o'clock.
Yeah, just set a time.
Seven, 10?
Okay. I need to get research keyed up. That's next week already. And so...
Thank you, everybody, for coming.
Let me do that. On my way home. Tim will drive.
Yeah.
Get your iPad.
Yep. Well, yeah, I have talked about all this in the talk room.